Good evening. I'm Rossa Lila O'Donnell, and on behalf of La Coalición de Taos and the League of Women Voters, New Mexico, I welcome you to the People's Forum of Taos Town Council Candidates. Thank you to our moderators Hannah Burling and Alice Martinez, and to the candidates Marietta Fambro, Jessica Herrera, Corilia Ortega, and Billy Romero for joining us tonight. This event is being recorded, and the link to that recording will appear in the chat box. It will also be rebroadcast by KCEI at a later date. You can check their website, culturalenergy.org, for details. It is respectful to recognize the unique and enduring relationship that exists between indigenous peoples and their traditional territories. We acknowledge that we are in the historic homeland of the Red Willow people within the original territory of Taos Pueblo. This acknowledgement will oblige as a reminder of our ongoing efforts to respectfully recognize, honor, reconcile, and partner with the Red Willow people whose land and water we benefit from in this great valley today. We named this the People's Forum because the questions we will pose to candidates have come from the people throughout our community. Thank you to all those who submitted more than 100 questions for the Town Council Candidates. We won't have time to ask each of those questions tonight or at next week's mayoral candidate forum, nor will we be taking additional questions during these events. We will provide all the candidates with a complete list of the questions we receive after the final forum. At that time, the questions will also be listed on La Coalición website, and that link can be found in the chat box. The chat box is not open for attendee comments tonight. Instead, you will find in the chat box information about the candidates, brief bios, websites, contact information, voter registration, early voting and election day information, the link to register for the February 1st People's Forum for Taos mayoral candidates if you haven't already done so. This information was also included in the email confirmation you received for tonight's Zoom event. The Taos Municipal Officer Election is a nonpartisan election, and the names of all candidates are listed with no party or slate designation by proclamation of the New Mexico Secretary of State. This People's Forum is politically neutral and does not endorse or support any specific candidate or campaign. La Coalición de Taos and the League of Women Voters of New Mexico, collaborators for tonight's forum, promote civil discourse through action and education for the purpose of improved public policy decisions and processes. Civil discourse means, at a minimum, mutually respectful, courteous, constructive, and orderly communication. Our moderators tonight are Hannah Burling, a longtime New Mexican and the president of the League of Women Voters, New Mexico, and Alice Martinez, a tribally enrolled member of the Taos Pueblo Nation, a retired postmaster from the U.S. Postal Service, and currently the coordinator of the Taos Pueblo Tewa Language Program. Thank you both, and welcome everyone to the People's Forum.
Yes, welcome. I'm Hannah Burling. Tonight's questions were solicited over three weeks via email, social media, word of mouth, public service announcements on local radio stations, flyers in area businesses, and in anuncios and ads placed in the Taos news. Once received, they were given to a team of curators who sorted them by topic and by the frequency with which a particular issue was raised. To try to cover as many topics as possible, the questions were often combined and expanded in scope. The questions we will pose tonight were selected with a specific intent of helping voters make an informed choice of candidates.
Good evening. Hi, yaho, na, ay, wa, am, pu, l, k, la. Good evening, candidates, everyone, and guests. I'm Alice Martinez. The questions tonight will be addressed to all candidates. We will be asking questions in a set rotating order. Our timekeepers, Maryam Von Briesen and Dean Bahari, who are here on your screens, will display a yellow card when there are 15 seconds remaining for the response, and a red card indicating time is up. The moderator will say "thank you," and the responding candidate will be muted by the webinar host. You just heard Rossa read a statement on civil discourse. One of our tasks as moderators will be to alert candidates if the bounds of civil discourse have been violated. We will start with two minutes opening remarks from each of the Taos Town Council Candidates, Marietta Fambro, Jessica Herrera, Corilia Ortega, and Billy Romero. Candidate Fambro, you may begin.
Good evening to all the candidates running for town council. And congratulations for just putting yourselves out there to run for this very important position. I want to thank all involved in this People's Forum. If you don't know me, I'm Marietta Fambro, running for one of two council positions. And yes, I am married to Jim Fambro, if you didn't know that already. I was born in my great-grandmother's home in La Loma, San Antonio Lane, to David and Susan Santi Esteban. I was raised on Santi Esteban Lane off of Ranchito's Road with my four siblings. I've raised my children, Monica, Christopher, Francisco, Suzanne, and Joshua, in this community, from Arroyo Seco to Las Montes, to Ranchitos, to Canyon, and ending up back in the town of Taos on the same Santi Esteban Lane as I grew up. Now it's time to help raise my grandchildren, Bo and Theo, who are living in the house I grew up in. I have worked in this community for over 35 years, and longer if you want to go back to my high school years, working at the Trailways Bus Station, then owned by my cousin Jackie Chase, now the location to Jalapenos. I have 24 years in town of Taos government, from grants administrator, accounting manager, and now finance director since 2003. My previous experience at the local engineering firm for 13 years assisted me in coming to the town of Taos. I also was owner of Miss Quick Stop for five years, then turning it over to my brother Marty Santi Esteban. I'm running for town council because I want to continue serving my community in different manner. I want to make sure my grandchildren and children have an opportunity to live in this community like I have. Lastly, with my proven experience as a current finance director of the town, I want to bring this experience and knowledge of the town's questions to show.
Thank you. Thank you. Jessica Herrera?
Can you hear me? Hello, I'm Jessica Herrera. I was raised here in Taos. I'm running for town council because I care about my community. I am a performer, and I wanted, and I was doing some community healing through performance, but I felt like it just wasn't enough. I wanted to do more. I felt like, what else can I do? And when this opportunity came to me, I thought this is another chance to help my community out. And I'm a willing, able body. I am a good listener. I have an open mind. I'm willing for discussion. I'm here for the people. I want to be the voice for the voiceless, and I want to help out the community. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Corilia Ortega.
Hola, saludos a todos. Me llamo Corilia Ortega, y soy de Arroyondo. Mis bisabuelos son de Rael Ariano y Córdoba. Y tengo mucho orgullo en esta vida en tener mi abuelo, Nicanor Ariano, y mis padres, Leonardo y Karen Ortega, y mis hermanas y mis hermanos. It is so wonderful to be together tonight, and I would like to begin by honoring our neighbors from Taos Pueblo. I want us to collectively think about how life in Taos and all the abundance and richness that is here is without question tied to the longstanding caregivers and protectors of this valley. It is not only in the past that they laid the seeds of livelihood in this place, they continue to do so. Taos Pueblo is not a relic of the past, and they're more than just the subjects of paintings we see downtown. They demonstrate to us how to uplift our children and youth, to honor and respect our elders, and for me, have taught how to cultivate meaningful relationships and interconnections with all that surrounds us. These are the values that have transcended generations, and they have rooted themselves so deeply that families like mine also orient to these lifeways. I encourage you to learn about Taos Pueblo programs such as the Red Willow Center, Tewa Babies, and the Taos Pueblo Awareness Coalition Team. In my lifetime, living here and knowing I'll always be here, I publicly commit myself to being in a good way with my neighbors and to listen. I want to acknowledge that we're on the ancestral lands of the Red Willow people, and more importantly, we are in relationships with Red Willow people as friends, colleagues, my sisters, and family. Again, my name is Corilia Ortega. I am running for town council as an Asachera farmer. I'm a tia to three nieces and eight nephews, and I'm a local foods advocate. I'm eager to dedicate my professional experiences and energies to Taosanios, and I have so much credencia for our hometown, and it's my intent to focus on families.
Thank you. Thank you, Corilia. Candidate Billy Romero?
Good evening, everybody out there, and again, thanks to everybody that is running for office. Takes a lot of courage for everybody to do this and put your families and yourself and your businesses on the line. Again, my name is Billy Romero. For those of you that don't know me, I am the owner of Romero's Rio Grande Propane here in Taos, a business that I started 20 years ago. I am a third-generation business owner. During my time, I have been the New Mexico Propane Gas Association President. I am the New Mexico Propane Education Foundation President. I am also chairman of the New Mexico Construction Industries Commission, and I do represent the LP side of it. I've served on planning and zoning for around 12 years. I have, my business right now is on the same property that my grandfather started in 1930. We are at a point now with the pandemic that it has affected local businesses, schools, and our youth. I am running for office to be a voice, a voice for the working-class people, a voice for businesses. It's been a long time since we've had a business person on the council. My years of experience of working with government officials, working through the state, working with planning and zoning, make me totally aware of the issues that are happening in Taos right now. I am the father to three, three great men or young men right now, and a grandpa to six grandchildren. I would like to see a Taos where my grandchildren can grow up just as I did. Again, my name is Billy Romero, for those of you that don't know me, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our first question has two parts. What is your number-one issue? How do you think you'll be able to make progress on it as a town council member? And we're going to begin with candidate Herrera.
Thank you for that question. I think one of the biggest problems right now in Taos is affordable housing and just housing in general. And there's a few different ways. I think there are some buildings that the town owns that we can, like the Midian Building. You know, we could put some housing there. Or there was this other idea I was having about doing historic landmarks in the neighborhoods. The historic landmark, the houses stay the same size. That's the only problem. They're going to stay the same size, but it keeps the rent down. It keeps, you know, them from building it up. Somebody comes into the neighborhood, builds up the house, and then makes everybody move out with the tax, with raising the taxes with a historic landmark. You can't do that, and I was thinking we could start looking around Taos and the old neighborhoods and maybe putting historic landmarks. And that would be one of the biggest issues I think that we could try to work on right now. Thank you.
Thank you. And candidate Ortega?
The question was the number-one issues in our efforts to move progress towards that goal. And I'm glad that that's being asked because I think it's a very simple response. Is our number-one issue is our priorities, who we are prioritizing, what our budget line is reflecting, who we care about, who we are serving, and the policies that we're choosing to go after, to implement, change, upgrade, so that we're really serving our multicultural community. When our priorities are mixed-matched, it looks like people not being able to have a home to live, not having wages that reflect the cost of living in our tourist town. It looks like the focus going to an airport versus things that serve our children and our elders so that they can age with dignity in our small town. So I think if the answer is about prioritizing, and I'm pushing a campaign to hear and talk to neighbors of what's important to you, and so many folks are saying it's infrastructure, it's our families, it's our jobs, it's having dignified work. And so I am open to how we can align our budget to reflect our values, and in that sense, it's ensuring that each and one of us are a priority at some point in the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. And then candidate Romero? You're muted.
I got you there. My biggest priority is seeing the reopening of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I think that that is key right now in being able to move our economy forward and being able to to move forward with some of the economic growth that we have right now without Planning and Zoning Commission. It's taken one step away from the citizens who need to bring projects to Taos. With, I served on that commission until I turned out. I think what that is the key focus right now, or my initial focus would be on seeing what we have to do to get volunteers to come back in so that we can have a full quorum and move forward with some of the key issues that are affecting Taos right now and not be, and resolving some of the delays that we have in building projects and projects that businesses are coming, are pacing coming into Taos right now. Thank you.
Thank you. And candidate Fambro?
I think my main, my name issue right now is the retention, the succession, and the town of Taos is whole, the succession and retention of all the employees of the town of Taos. As myself, I'm ready to retire. We have a lot of mid-management, upper management, and just people that are, have been through the town for many, many years. And if you don't have people to work the initiatives for housing, for planning, for anything, you don't have anything. So the backbone of the town itself to get anything done are these employees. And I see that as a really big problem right now with COVID and not being able to hire people. You know, some people just can't work because of childcare services. Some people cannot just work in general, and we need to maintain our employees that we have and succession for those upper management employees. And I think that's really one of the main things, and it is going to take some time to get those positions filled. So if anybody's out there looking for a job, we need, we need good, local, smart people. So I think that's one of the bigger issues. There's tons. Everybody here has the same, you know, their ideas, but everything is important right now. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next question is, "People expressed multiple concerns around transparency and giving the public adequate notification and time to respond. Examples included a little-known ordinance passed two weeks before the current mayor's reelection in 2018 that transferred from the mayor and town council to the town manager, the power to appoint and approve the positions of town attorney, town clerk, finance director, and police chief. What is your response to such concerns?" And we're going to begin with candidate Ortega.
Can you summarize the first part of the question? I got all the context, but I just wanted to try and answer the question.
"People expressed multiple concerns around transparency and giving the public adequate notification and time to respond."
Great. Transparency is very important to me. That's why I've enlisted my campaign with Act Blue and accountable to the IRS, so you all know who's funding me. It's these baby steps that show that it is a value of mine, that there is a clear process of how things are accessed. I think a lot of Taosanios feel a lot of discouragement and distrust because they feel like what is in our best interest isn't always at the table and at the main conversation when decisions are being made, especially if it's behind closed doors. Oftentimes, we see these things in fine print in the newspaper, but I think we can really bolster our outreach with residents in terms of ads, of inclusivity. As we've all been living with the pandemic, we've all gone into this online format, but it really, that isn't really Taos. We're very much face-to-face. And so creating alternative ways to have big print ads in the paper, really focusing on deadlines that are coming up, having agendas printed well ahead of time and in circulation, so folks can have an opinion about how they want to be supporting a certain issue. That would take the council's direction and our response to being accountable to voters and the voters and the general community at large. Let's face it, the choices we make on the city council, in fact, in fact, impact our entire county.
Thank you. All right. Candidate Romero?
Okay, so you're, just so that I understand the question before I get timed out, was it specific to the decision that was made, or is it general, is that just a generalization of it?
That was an example. The general is the multiple concerns around transparency.
Well, as far as when it comes to town business and transparency, I mean, everything that happens other than what goes into executive session is transparent. There's a way to request those records and a way to obtain them. While some question the speed that they happen, you know, I think that in all forms of government transparency does exist, while it may not be at the speed of light, there are some as many would like. It is there, and there are certain issues that I think that I am not totally aware of because I'm not a, I'm not in office right now. If you're speaking to what you had said earlier, I think the thing is, is as a new councilperson, whoever gets elected, they have the, they have the option to go in and look and question the decisions that were being made without having to be moving the town forward. And those would be one of the things, if elected, if people choose to elect me, that I would look into. One of the, you know, so that we do not have the ability of new, new mayors coming in or new council members coming in in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. And candidate Fambro? You're muted.
Oh, I'm sorry. There you go. Okay. On transparency, and into the, I think the example you gave about directors or appointees, I know that is, was required by an ordinance, and so there is a process for the ordinance to be published 30 days before. There's a lot of information out there, so that had to be done, that to be more transparent about it. There is a task of website. The town clerk can get anybody registered to get all that information sent to them directly. That's a really good tool. And, you know, maybe we need to push that more and get more people involved to get that. Now, there's a lot of people that don't have internet. You know, how do we get the word out to them? You know, is it papers? I'm a paper person, but how do we deliver it to them? So there, we need to work on some ways to get to the elderly people and to people that don't have internet services or are not very technological like I, you know, we are sometimes. So I think the town can improve. If I am elected to council, you know, I believe those agendas should be sent out on Friday with every single backup that needs to be on there. And that's transparent. That information is there. Yeah, that's way required before the 72 hours, but who cares? Let's do it earlier than later.
Thank you. And now candidate Herrera?
Hi. I think transparency is really important. And maybe just a little bit more information on the newspaper so people are more informed and know what's coming up, and they see it right there. But no, I believe it's very important, and I think that when we make decisions, we really need to make sure that everybody knows about them when they're decisions are being made. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll go to question three. "What do you see as the role of the town manager in relation to the mayor and the council? Are you satisfied with the performance of the current town manager? Please explain why you are or not." So we'll begin this question with candidate Ortega.
I went first last time.
Okay, so we'll go with candidate Romero.
Okay, could you repeat the question one more time for me, please?
Sure. "What do you see as the role of the town manager in relation to the mayor and the council? Are you satisfied with the performance of the current town manager? Please explain why you are or not."
Okay, I'll answer the second part of that first. It's, I am not in the position right now where I would, where I have any dealings more than what I did when I was on planning and zoning with the town manager. So I couldn't answer that truthfully at this point. I think that the town manager's position is one that he's got to make a lot of tough decisions moving forward with policy, hiring. The town manager has a full plate. If I am elected, I plan to make myself totally aware of what his position is and, you know, hold any manager or any employee up to the most, up to the highest standards that, that there is. As far as what his performance is now, I couldn't, as a businessman, totally, I couldn't even answer that because I do not work with him on a daily basis. As I say, when I did work with him on planning and zoning, I thought that he was very well informed of the issues that we were taking, that were taking place at the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Fambro?
Based on our personnel policy and the duties of the manager and the mayor and the council, that is now required the mayor, the manager works for the mayor, and he's the general operator of the town of Taos. And obviously, the council is part of the mayor's administration, so the mayor should involve the council in whatever's going on. I think that we are going to be policymakers, but we also need to be involved and have accountability of whatever the manager is doing. Maybe on a weekly basis, send in information out, say, these are our list of stuff that we've worked on this week. My relationship, obviously, I've been, he is my boss, and I mean, I've been with him for eight years. And in my capacity, a very knowledgeable man, very committed, workload too much on him. And, you know, I guess we all know that he will not be renewing his contract. And so going forward, we, you know, we need to focus on whatever is going to come about with the new town manager. But the manager is in charge of running the general operations of the town, but the mayor and the council should have and be more informed of what's going on on a more regular, more regular basis is how I see it.
Thank you. Candidate Herrera?
Hi. Well, with him leaving office, I think we need to just look forward. I think we need to just focus on what's, what's next in front of us.
Well, with him leaving office, I think we need to just look forward. I think we need to just focus on what's, what's next in front of us. And that's it.
Thank you. Candidate Ortega.
Thank you for that question. It is at the moment a moot point, but I will say that I and many Tausan news have pushed back and have not felt that for the past eight years, although he may be working hard and committed, but to who? And on what timeline and whose money? Because quite frankly, when we look at housing getting $75,000 and a regional airport for water and sewage receives EDA care funding act in response to COVID, our community did not need that commitment or that work. I'm not talking bad about the airport. It has its time and place in our community, but we're talking about a global pandemic in which our town manager geared a direction away from Tausan news, away from those who are being impacted the hardest, single families, mothers, children who are staying at home. And where was our EDA care funding? And yes, it was for infrastructure. And he repeated that, yes, we could only spend it for infrastructure. Infrastructure isn't necessarily just an airport. It's how we equip our workforce. It's how we create vocational settings. When we look to other counties and city municipalities, they access money directly for people because humans are infrastructure. We are the economy. We create the profits, profits in this town. So moving forward, I think we have a need to continue standardized performance reviews annually that don't go unnoticed and unchecked.
Thank you. Thank you. So now we're going to go into the fourth question. It's the lightning round. So I'm going to ask each one of you to either answer yes or no. There's two questions. We'll start off with the first one. So remember, it's a yes or no question, simple, no explanation, just yes or no. First question is, do you support term limits? Yes or no? We'll start off with candidate Ortega. I mean, excuse me, Fambro. Sorry.
Not at this time. No.
Okay, thank you. Do you support term limits? Yes or no? Candidate Herrera. You're muted. Can you unmute?
Close the question.
Do you support term limits?
No.
Okay, thank you. Candidate Ortega, do you support term limits?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. And candidate Romero. You're, okay, thanks.
Do I support term limits? Yes.
Okay, thank you. The next lightning round question, same thing, yes or no? Do you support home rule? Do you support home rule? We'll start off with, dear, I lost track here. So let's see, we'll start off with, we're going to still go in the same order because it's the same four questions. So candidate Fambro.
Uh, no, I don't.
Okay. Candidate Herrera, do you support home rule?
No.
Thank you. Candidate Ortega.
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you. And candidate Romero.
No, I don't.
Thank you.
All right. Our next question. Do you think that collaboration among the pueblo, the town and the county needs to be improved? If so, how will you foster better cooperation? Do you have an example of either successful or failed attempts at collaboration? And we're going to begin with candidate Herrera.
So I think that it's very important for us to be open minded and with clear communication, clear communication. I find that the cloud seeding should have been more communicated with the pueblo people. And I just, I think that we need to communicate more. Communication is big and shouldn't be making any decisions without consulting everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Ortega.
Yes, I would say one major failing was the airport. And if there was any pueblo inclusion in respect to their mountain, the air in the space in which they have prayer and ceremony, I don't believe they were in any conversation or invited to those spaces. And so that is, it is disrespectful and it is lacking recognition for a sovereign nation. I have full hope and belief in fruitful communication, relationships. And it's also important for us to ask pueblo leadership what they feel and think about our relationship with them. And what we're lacking, it is our job to improve those things. I've seen very little relationship building. And I think we can create and improve our dialogue with tribal council, the war chief's office and the governor's office. And as I said in my introduction, I lean to colleagues and friends to do exceptional work with families, with our elders. And they have fruitful endeavors. They are the incubator of 100% community initiatives in which now we are adopting and implementing in our community in response during COVID. That was a pueblo-led initiative. They have Toba babies in which they're investing in early childhood development. So there's absolutely room for collaboration. They work with us. They live with us. And we have to decide to have some sort of commission.
Thank you. Okay, candidate Romero.
There we go. I, through my business, I do work for, in, through the town, through the pueblos and through the, through the county. I think that our relationship with the public government for the past 15 to 20 years has improved over what it was. I think that we continue to try to strive and work with the county more. And I think that at some point, we are all coming into a unifying factor that we are going to find that we need to work closer together. Without being, from my standpoint, from the business that I'm in, I see that, that the relationships have improved. I don't know if they were, if therefore they should be, but I've seen some change in with our friends from the pueblo to where they, you know, started doing more and more with the town. I know that we've got some collaborations with wastewater and with the county. So I think that we are doing and going in the right direction. It may not be at lightning speed, but we will get there at some point. Thank you.
Thank you. And candidate Fambro.
As our neighbors, our Tausan pueblo neighbors, the town is, has in the past worked diligently with them, especially on the airport. You know, that crossway runway for 30 years was held up because of the EIS and the pueblo was totally involved. The only reason that runway ever built was the final, finalization with the pueblo accepting. We put monitors, they're called location monitors for aircrafts to not fly around the protected site. And those are still in operations. The memorandum of understanding was signed by the pueblo. So the town has made good efforts to, especially at the airport, and continues with water and sewer. As Billy has mentioned, you know, we, we have them connected. Our fire department serves their, serves their lands. You know, we coordinate a lot with the pueblo. Yes, there's always more that we can do. There's, you know, better relationships. I think the best thing that they have done is extend, extend those terms for the council for two years. That gives more continuity to work on projects together. So I think the town itself has done a good job. We always can do better and respect every initiative that maybe they have and we have, have joint role.
Thank you. So the next question. Many questions referred to the lack of affordable housing. Questions included skyrocketing home prices and rents, the number of short-term rentals, and the inability of generational families to afford to live in Taos. Is affordable housing a priority for you? If so, what actions will you take to address this issue? And we will begin with candidate Ortega.
It's absolutely a priority to me. And many of my colleagues, friends and family cannot afford to live here because of the housing market. And so I believe we need to have a coordinated response with the county and the state. And there's so many policies that we can be actively seeking. This is not a two-year crisis. This has been something that has been happening for, for long enough. But we can, when working with the state or the county, we can look at property taxes on vacant homes, incorporating a high-value transfer tax. We can look at deed restrictions and getting that funded through our short-term rentals. We can, we need to have pathways for housing at every income level, increase the amount of starter homes. We don't have that market. It's gone. And we can, we can improve that by looking at our, at our zoning and what our density levels and capacity are. Also, affordable housing is hard because town and county aren't the developers. And maybe that's something we want to talk about. Should we be? Could we be doing that role? We already have water, gas and sewer set up, so it is an affordable option. If that's a priority to us, we need more mixed-use design with businesses on the bottom and families on top. And more importantly, use inclusionary zoning. And this, you know, forces developers to commit to a percentage of affordable housing in these new units. And lastly, for our short-term rentals, which are.
Thank you. Candidate Romero.
Affordable housing, you ask 20 people in a room, what's affordable housing? And you're going to get 20 different answers. One of the ways, you know, affordable housing right now, I think that the town has done a lot along with the county when we come to the low income, low income size of the, of the spectrum. But what we start looking at now is we need more affordable housing for our teachers, our professionals, our working class people. I don't know at this time what our answer would be to that. The private sector is not one that, at this time with the market the way it is, but we need to start looking at maybe modular home communities, mobile home communities, working with us, working with the county to, to, to try to encourage developers to go in this direction. Start looking at maybe utilizing some properties to get housing built for teachers. Right now, there's a shortage of teachers because we can't get them in based off of housing. We've got the same problem with nurses coming in. I see that through my business. I see, we go from a wide range from the very low income to the very high income. And we, there's just not a quick answer, other than we got to start moving forward and making, and having economic development to the point where we can start increasing wages, development, economic development, more jobs always brings more competitive wages. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Herrera.
Affordable housing is a very big issue. I've always found that to be a big issue here in Taos. Just finding housing is a hard thing. Even growing up here, it was always hard to find a nice place. And so, like I said before, I thought that we could probably use some land from the town, like the Medina building. And well, it's, it would cost too much to rebuild it. It costs about the same to build some houses, some apartments or, you know, some housing for people. And the other thing I was gonna mention tonight was the historic landmarks in the neighborhood and the old neighborhoods here in Taos, I think, might help the situations to keep the rent down, to keep our people here to have affordable housing in town and just in our town. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Fambro.
Um, yes, affordable housing, agree with everybody involved with affordable housing. That, again, that the town for years has had Chami Severde, you know, worked with Habitat for Humanity. We collaborated with the county. They gave the land and we did all the work for Herdner project, not we, the town. And the county worked together on that project. You know, pulling resources together to buy property between maybe the town and the county, you know, putting the funds and getting the land in the proper areas. But none of us are affordable housing experts. So we need to go where it's worked, workforce housing. And I think I saw in the chat, workforce housing isn't going to work. I don't know who that was, but it, you know, we got to try something. Like Billy said, nurses, teachers, police, fire, those working people of our community need a place. I have a house. I have a mortgage. I'm sure, you know, I've been there how many years and I still have a mortgage. But it's hard work and homeownership is, is what we all want to look for. And if we can't, then at least something affordable, second homeowners, you know, let's change. I don't know how that would work to change the property tax on second homeowners. Short-term rentals, the town has done a, a good job in getting these short-term rentals, taxes, lodgers tax, grocery receipts taxes, out of these short-term rental properties. We're still having problems with the new ordinance.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. The seventh, we're already up to our seventh question. So it's a lot of questions, but a lot of issues that need to be addressed. So thank you, everyone, for your patience. The next question is the budget submitted to the mayor and council included $20 million to the airport and $75,000 for affordable housing. Yet, public input to the comprehensive plan shows our community overwhelmingly wants the Taos, the town to focus on affordable housing and not the airport. Where do you stand on this matter? So we'll start with, let's see, candidate Fambro.
Okay, on this matter of the airport and affordable housing, again, the airport, the $20 million, that airport is 95% funded by federal funds, federal aviation funds. The town contributes usually 5% of that money. This is the first time we've contributed a little bit more of our own money. But if you have infrastructure, runway for public safety, and you have a facility there to support that, why not fix it? You know, we all fix our homes. We try to maintain. That's all we're doing at the airport. Let's maintain it. If economic development comes later, then that's great. Yes, housing, I mean, the initiative is housing, but you're going to need more than $75,000. We're going to need millions of dollars. And that fund does not have millions of dollars. So we need to collaboratively, private partner, town and county, work with the money to get those funds together and make something happen on affordable housing. I mean, I don't have the answer either. I've been in this town for 60 years as birth and, you know, affordable housing has been here forever. Go to where it's worked, find who's been successful. And, you know, it's usually the workforce. You bring an employer in or even small employers and they buy property and they, they have the land and they try to help their employees out. So that's my point on both those.
Thank, thank you. We got a little bit out of order. I apologize for that. So bear with us. So the next question is for the same question to candidate Herrera.
Can you repeat the question?
Sure. The budget submitted to the mayor and council included $20 million to the airport and $75,000 for affordable housing. Yet, public input to the comprehensive plan shows our community overwhelmingly wants the town to focus on affordable housing and not the airport. Where do you stand on this matter?
I would put the needs of the people first, before the tourists. Always. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Ortega.
Yes, I think I've already alluded to this and I'll contribute one last thing about. Yes, I think I've already alluded to this and I'll contribute one last thing about creating a lottery system for short-term rental properties. I think that's also very important as we talk about affordable housing. But in any case, taxpayers at the end of the day are paying money for playgrounds for the rich and wealthy. The, what happens at the Taoski Valley is their business. I don't understand how it is functionally are. Why is the priority? Um, because it isn't. And yes, seventy-five thousand dollars is a joke. That doesn't even buy a, an acre in Taos. So if we can aggressively seek funds during a pandemic for an airport, I know we are more than capable, whoever is elected here on this call, to aggressively seek the funding that helps us create policies, infrastructure, maintenance, um, on all the things about what it means to live in Taos. Um, there are solutions and I absolutely agree, we should be leading, leaning into the experts. We have so many comprehensive plans, economic development plans, and they're all on the shelf getting dusted. We pay for those plans and we don't see the implementation of them. It is unacceptable. Taosians are frustrated. We are living paycheck to paycheck. Our wages are not aligned with the cost of living and we're arguing over an airport, over housing. We're better than that.
Thank you. Candidate Romero.
Well, first of all, getting back to the airport, when the F, the Federal Aviation Authority offers us money in which that was funded at, I think it's a no-brainer when we need to have matching funds with, you know, at the percentage that it is. While affordable housing, there again, we're going back to the argument of how do we get there. Um, a lot of times, we're seeing now governments throughout the United States have not had the answer to that. We're not going to have that in Taos right now. I don't have the answer to it and, and that's the honest truth. I think that there again, when we start talking about affordable housing, we gotta start talking about economic growth. What I've seen when I was on planning and zoning, there's far too many people protesting anything that would come in that would help our community. Taxes on property do not help with the, uh, with the financials in Taos. Those come from GRTs. And that's where, you know, there is, it's going to be up to the private sector and we're going to have to buy properties that, and that will allow for some sort of building of affordable housing and affordable rents. But we do need to start concentrating on what we, what we need to get these working-class people housed. My sons have all moved back to Taos and they've ran into the same issues, the same problems. So, thank you.
Thank you. So you're all gonna like this one. This is a, a quick, simple, short question. What kinds of things would you do to diversify the economy? So we'll start off with, uh, candidate Herrera.
To diversit, to diversitize the community.
The economy.
The economy. Well, I think that we need to just, um, right now, we are in an art town. We're well-known for our art and our recycling. Oh, we make houses out of trash here. It's, it's beautiful. They're called earthships. Um, I think maybe we should, um, publicize all the good in Taos and, um, I would have to think about that. I'll have to get back to you, however. It's a good question.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Um, candidate Ortega.
I love this question because it gives so much inspiration and possibility what happens in Taos. Oftentimes, people say it's a dead-end place. There's nowhere to go. But I'm back home and so, and so many people, if they could, they would be back home. So I'm excited to think about an economy that aligns with our natural resources, right? We don't want to overdevelop past our aquifer and our snowpack. Climate change is real. And the values of Taosianos are very much land-based. So I think we should be looking at economies that drive a just transition to alternative energies. We need to look at small manufacturing. Um, the city can be committing and supporting those people to trying to develop those. Um, I want to, I want to envision a place where we have Taos products in which they're value-added products based on our remedies, our fruit trees, the abundance of food that we have here. And, and in that way, we're securing our food system as we move to a hotter climate, a drier drought climate. Um, and we have organic products that we can manufacture ourselves and it's all Taos-made. We're not having to import. We get to share the abundance of our valley with our neighbors. I want to look at us to invest in our trades and our locations, the jobs that we know that pay so well when we have, when we have those folks doing those jobs. We should be investing in continuing education programs. Um, and all this to say is that, you know, this addresses our minimum wage. It addresses the wages that allows to live here.
Thank you. Uh, and candidate Romero.
I'm unmuted already. So I think that we start, we need to start by encouraging businesses to come into Taos. We need to start getting, uh, businesses that will compete against one another for our employees, start paying a competitive wage. We need to start bringing in, uh, businesses to compete with the ones that we have here now. We need to, you know, we, through planning and zoning, we had a hotel corridor that had been protested because it didn't meet with the vision of, of certain people. We need, we have properties that, uh, that, for instance, the Cow's Field, which Smiths was looking at developing out in that area. That place there right now is zoned for, I can't remember how many houses. We need to stop and look at what we're doing. We need to take a direction to start bringing in the economy, to start bringing in businesses into Taos. Making it a little bit easier for them to come in, start their businesses up and build it. There is a historic area that we need to keep in that historic. But on the outline areas, we need to move forward with them. We are limited because of the size of the town itself. We have the pueblo, we have the county. So we need to utilize those properties and property and start encouraging businesses to come in and start bringing in people from our surrounding areas to shop in Taos so that our GRTs can get better. So we can be have more competitive wages. Thank you.
Thank you. That was the last of the candidates. Um, Hannah.
Um, no, candidate Fambro.
I'm sorry. Forgive me, uh, candidate Fambro.
That's okay. Um.
Apologies.
No, no problem. Um, you see a lot of vacant buildings around town. You know, we need to get those buildings filled with something. Small businesses, medium businesses, large businesses, everything here in the town is, contributes in one way or another. Um, so some of those vacant buildings, if we can get another thing, restaurants. I mean, we, we, we're short on restaurants and people want more variety. And, you know, hopefully we can get some small mom and pops up again, you know, Taosianos left. Hopefully Michael's never leaves, you know, so let's see if we can get some of that back in there. Um, tech jobs that don't use our water so much, don't use, you know, they could use, uh, uh, internet. So, you know, let's get more broadband, uh, more, more of that kind of technological stuff. Uh, also solar, little solar companies, um, small manufacturing, like, uh, Ms. Ortega said, some of those small things. So I, I just think that all of that would grow the economy, not just keeping the one-size-fits-all. You know, small, medium, large, uh, competition. If there's, you know, get some competition here and to, you know, just be structured and smart about whatever growth may happen with it.
Thank you.
What is your plan for supporting the community's desire to bring back recycling? And should recycling be expected to make a profit? Candidate Ortega.
Uh, yes, I, yeah, and, and we know that delayed in opening because we don't have any employees or workers. Um, but yes, um, I, I think that the recycling center is a priority. I don't think it has to necessarily make a profit. We have to be conscientious consumers at this point. Nobody really wants our trash. So the whole notion of what we were taught when we were younger to reduce reuse and recycle, um, although that's an individual uh, action, we really do have to look at ways in which we can, to push against corporations in which are not responsible or accountable for the disproportionate amount of trash. Um, and so the closure of the recycling center, um, was just also a result of it not being a priority for our city council. Um, we were more focused on bringing tourists to Taos than, um, funding services that all Taosians appreciate having.
Thank you. Candidate Romero.
Uh, I got too tied up in, uh, Ms. Ortega's answer. Could you repeat the question again?
Okay. What's your plan for supporting the community's desire to bring back recycling? And should recycling be expected to make a profit?
Well, recycling nationwide has never been a profitable business. If it was, you would see private entities getting into it. It's a service that's provided. I think that it's something that is needed. I think that it's, you know, as far as when it comes to the town, I, I believe that when it was shut down, there was a board that was involved in shutting it down. The, uh, the cost of operating a recycling center, uh, can be, can, can be astronomical depending on the size of, uh, of, uh, recycling that's going on. I think that there again, had it been a profitable way, we would see private entities getting into it. I think that, uh, moving forward, I'd like to see it open, but I'd like to see it privatized also. And that more of the, uh, surrounding areas that are using it pay into having the recycling center open and, and main, and, and the cost of maintaining it be split up with ours, with the county, city and, uh, even the surrounding counties that are using it. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Fambro.
Recycling. I'm one of the biggest recyclers. My family gets really crazy with me because I tried to do it all the time. I make them deliver it when it was open. So I, I fully support recycling. It's never going to be a profit-making. Um, right now, there's a eight-point, um, uh, resolution with the county to work on it. Um, it's all going to be made market-driven, financial responsibility. Um, and, uh, continue with a regional effort on it because the town, twenty years ago, I wish we all were here in the same conversation. Twenty years ago, when the town started it and we all should have been partners and joint, joint ownership of that and it had probably succeeded, but we can't go back. So we go forward. Yeah, we should have raised those recycling rates. We should have had the county involved twenty years ago, ten years ago. But that was everybody's, uh, fault. And so now we have to try to make it better. If it can open, great, but we have to see the studies and the studies already show what it is. It's market-driven. It's not going to be a moneymaker. It's getting the private little small, uh, recycled house. All of those guys together and see how we can come again to, to try to open it and, and make it work. If it's not, uh, collaborative with all the entities, then maybe taking it off somewhere else. But main thing too is education, educating people how you can recycle because it's not.
Candidate Herrera.
Recycling. Yeah, that's a big issue. Taos is a big recycling community. And we need to get it open. We need to keep it open. Um, we have, I was thinking we could use the taxes from the new marijuana. Maybe we could use those taxes from the, from, from the, from the, the new marijuana. Um, you know, being legalized here in Taos and everything, we can use those taxes for detox and to keep that recycling open. We're going to get more, more money through that. And so I was thinking maybe because of, because we're getting, get more money, let's use it for what we need here in Taos. And, um, yeah, detox and recycling center. Thank you.
Thank you. Right. Do you think the town council has a role to play in mitigating the climate crisis and making Taos more sustainable? If so, what actions would you be in favor of? And we're going to start with candidate Romero.
That's because I'm in the propane business, correct? That's a tough one. I mean, you know, th- those are issues that are facing our nation and our world today. I think that there's a place for it and I think there's a balance with it. Uh, we've seen other countries that try to do away with fossil fuels. And have come back to using, uh, and creating a balance between fossil fuels and solar energy and so forth. I think that the town has a role in, uh, in utilizing which they have started doing with solar energy. We've not started with wind power, uh, very much up in this area, but we can't forget that while we're trying to do this, the carbon footprint that is left behind, uh, while we're trying to develop these is bigger than the carbon footprint that's going to be in each and every, in our individual houses. You've got to look at the whole picture. What is it going to, what's the cost of recycling lithium? Which is in a lot of these batteries that is for off-grid power. What's the side, you know, what's the impact that we're going to have on, uh, the blades off of the giant windmills that we can't recycle? This is a global problem. It's not only a Taos problem. So honestly, I've got ideas, but I don't have the solution. And I don't know if the town council would either. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Fambro.
Um, I think we, we all do have a responsibility for climate change. Be, um, you know, maybe a ten-year plan for electric vehicles. Um, I know the blue bus, uh, that transports our community members around, they're going to electric vehicles. The town has done a great job with solar arrays and working with Kit Carson Electric. Let's keep, uh, doing that initiative. Um, you know, climate change is very, you know, conserving our water, you know, making better, making maybe a better water conservation plan, um, throughout the county and the town. Um, saving some of our natural resources. Um, I don't know, just a lot of, I guess, obviously, this is a, a, a question of big concern and a lot of unknowns to fill whatever we need to do to help the climate change.
Thank you. Okay. Candidate Herrera.
Can I hear the question again?
Of course. Do you think the town council has a role to play in mitigating the climate crisis and making Taos more sustainable? If so, what actions would you be in favor of?
I, I do think so. And I think that, um, more solar panels, more like, we got to get that recycling center open. And education, teaching our kids, um, how to recycle, how, how to, um, save the earth, save the planet. You know, do what we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Ortega.
Yes, well, I'm an Aseka Keta. It means I irrigate and grow food using the S-TECA system. And so the values and traditions of our community, of our communal water sharing practices, this is already a wisdom we have and we can't afford to forget it. Um, this valley has successfully adapted to centuries of change and, and has sustained through it. And so Aseka communities like ours know that adaptability are, is key to survival. Um, and in order for everyone to thrive, we all have to be part of the solution from our youth to our elders. So our water and agricultural lands are the most precious asset we have. And protecting them for future generations means we have to develop wisely. Um, we have to preserve ag lands, conserve water, build the. Um, we have to preserve ag lands, conserve water, build the health of our soils. Um, and we need planning and zoning measures that anticipate the crisis. We know it's here, water scarcity, extreme temperatures, disruptions in our food chain. All of that will threaten our ability to cultivate home. And so we can invest in water efficiency systems, adjust transition to solar and turbine energy and rely on our agriculture for carbon sequestration.
Great. Thank you.
So we're going to go into the another lightning round. These are answers or will be yes or no to the yes or questions, the yes or no. So we're going to start off with candidate Fambro. Do you support a $15 minimum wage?
Yes.
Thank you. Candidate Herrera, do you support $15 minimum wage?
Yes.
Candidate Ortega? Bless you. I think that was a sneeze.
It wasn't. Absolutely, yes, and plus more.
Thank you. And candidate Romero?
It's a tough one, but I'm going to say I support it. But with reservations.
Thank you. The next question, yes or no, is do you think $15 is a sustainable living wage in Taos? Yes or no, candidate Fambro?
No.
Thank you. Candidate Herrera?
No.
Thank you. Candidate Ortega?
No.
Thank you. Candidate Romero?
No.
Thank you. It's at, we're at 7:44 and I believe we have enough time for another question. Is timekeepers? Is that correct? Okay. So a question, next question is, do you have specific programs that you would put forward to support our youth? Candidate Fambro?
There we go. Um, I don't have specific programs, but I think jointly working with the Taos Municipal Schools on the programs that they already have would be a good initiative. And also working with any of the partners that do provide youth programs, behavioral programs, that kind of stuff. The town is not in the business of doing good programs like that. You know, we're we're more about the streets, the water, the sewer, keeping your guys' infrastructure. So you turn on the water and you don't, you have it. But we can jointly and collaboratively work with the schools, with MOUs. We did that with the Eco Park. The town funded that. They borrowed the money for that field, has $2 million. We paid that off for those youth to use that field. So those type of bigger initiatives, the record, the Youth and Family Center, you know, build onto it. One of the big thing is just turning that into a big rec center with a with tennis courts and pickleballs and little league fields. You know, it's going to take a big chunk of money and probably a lot of borrowing, but the town is in the financial capacity now for maybe doing some debt on that because we've been very fiscal responsible in bringing down debt. And that would be one of my biggest initiatives is get that Youth and Family Center bigger, better. It's 20 years old. That was one of my first projects as I started as grants administrator and I would definitely love to see that.
Thank you. I know. Thank you. Candidate Herrera?
Can you read me the question again?
Sure. Do you have specific programs that you would put forward to support our youth?
Specific programs? No, but I would like to see some more dance programs in the schools. I think it's good. It's good energy. It's a good way of expression. And it's a good way for the kids to to learn how to to just enjoy themselves and and have some exercise. So yeah, I would like some more dance programs.
Thank you. Candidate Ortega?
Yes, this is one of my also favorite thing. I have a lot of teenage nieces and nephews. And so I think we need to be supporting programs that help youth preparedness, whether that's Skype and internships, apprenticeships, mentorships with businesses and nonprofit organizations, really connecting those early on. I'm a huge fan of Bridges, Fit, Rocky Mountain Youth Corps, and all the extracurricular activities that the schools have funding for to help students. I'm behind all of that. I'm I'm a product of when a community invests in youth activities in parks. We need to be spending our money on outdoor recreation spaces that are free because not all of us can afford a ski path. So let's make things affordable and available to everyone who lives here. Um, I'm also really excited. One of my campaign points is to reinstate the youth council member to our council. I believe they need to be invested early on and have a voice as the table. And that's with us as elected leaders. So I'm not an expert on youth experiences, but I'm open to knowing and learning from them themselves as they're experts in this time. Um, and so I could talk about that for a long time, but those are good and starting points.
Thank you. Candidate Romero?
Well, to build on what Marietta said earlier, I think that we need to start asking our state representatives, our state senators, and working with the county to start building on the Family Youth Center. You've ever been to Santa Fe with, I was privileged to go there with my grandson. They've got a great great youth center out there there. And I'd like to see something like that in Taos. I think that we need to start encouraging the schools to have programs available for them. And we've got a great outdoors out there. We need to start utilizing that with our youth. I think that it's time that we start looking a little bit past tourism and start looking at what youth is bringing our kids back in and having them enjoy the nature out there. And while the town isn't in the business of of doing this, we can assist in it. And I think as a council member with the right people in there and stuff, we could start encouraging our other leaders are to bring in grants so that we can start building on these projects and move forward with them. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that ends all the questions.
Yes, and now we go to our candidates' closing statements. These are 90 seconds long and we're going to begin with candidate Herrera.
First of all, I just want to thank everybody for attending tonight. Everybody here, everybody watching. Thank you for being interested in your town's politics. My name is Jessica Herrera and I care about this community and what happens in it. And I'm here for you to listen and to to make decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Ortega?
I'm so grateful you're all here and I hope I've expressed my deep commitment to Taos Seniors and to our city and that I've demonstrated my willingness to learn and problem solve the issues that we're facing. I know I may not have answered everything all within the time limit, but I'm a rigorous learner and I do not hesitate to ask questions and better understand what I don't know. I've spent the last two years being of service to different initiatives in Taos. And I've been participating, listening and collaborating with entrepreneurs and therapists and farmers and teachers, our working families. So I have a strong understanding of these experiences, including my own. And I'm proud to know the experts who are ready to give us direction in resolving issues related to housing, education, our economy, healing our traumas. That's why my campaign slogan is Entresodos, because all of us contribute to the vitality of Taos. When I asked an experienced, an experienced politician about running for council despite having little governing experience, he told me, Coria, you'll learn how it all works. What voters want to feel confident about is that they don't have to convince you to show up or care. You already do that. So I ask for your vote and visit coriaforcaos.com for more information. You know where my priorities lie and who I will always be in favor of. That's you and that's your family. Buenas noches y que Dios me diga.
Thank you. Candidate Romero?
Yes, like first of all, I'd like to thank everybody. And thank you three ladies for coming out and having the courage to do this. I have served our community. I've served the state. I have served in the capacity of planning and zoning for numerous years. I start, I've known how or I started to learn how the how the town operates. I've been in the business community for years. My grandfather started in 1933. My father, now me, now my sons have been in the business. I have the knowledge and the know-how to move forward. I think that my experience with government as far as being the chairman of Construction Industries Commission, the work that I've done through our propane industry to help and protect the consumers of New Mexico. I am a caring person. I have the town and the people of Taos. I want to be a spokesman for them. I think I want, I think that it's time that we have people to speak out for those that do not have a voice. And I and and that voice is from the working class, from the business community. We need to we need to just move forward. And I hope that this job interview that I've done tonight will will convince you that I am the right person for the job. And I do appreciate your vote and support on March 1st. And remember, early voting has, will start here real soon. Thank you.
Thank you. And candidate Fambro?
Thank you all. I want to thank you all who have participated in this forum. I will work with anyone, one of you candidates that wins. And the same goes for the whoever may succeed for mayor. I will work with anybody. I have the experience, the financial background, the knowledge and of the operations of everything that goes through the town of Taos. Just because I'm the finance department, I see everything. So you know, I I could be an educator to anybody that wins on the council and even mayor, either or mayors, whoever whoever wins. So I think together, together, we can move the town forward for the betterment of all that live and and live here and work here. Again, I bring extensive knowledge to the council. I'm committed. I'm compassionate. If anybody knows me, I'm very compassionate on any undertaking that is presented before me. So please get out and vote. Our people need to vote and get out. And I would appreciate your vote for Marietta Fambro, your next town councilwoman.
Thank you.
Thank you again, candidates, moderators, and all of you who have attended this forum. You can access a recording of this event at La Coalición's website, lacoalitiondetaus.com. The link is in the chat box. And you have another opportunity to hear from these candidates during the Taos News Town Council Candidate Forum on Monday night, January 31st. Municipal elections are important and yet historically voter turnout is very low. Less than 20% of registered voters voted in the 2018 Taos municipal elections. So this year, get registered and vote. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.